Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 3:30 PM on this 10th day of November 2020. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Freedom, Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it's impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend this meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe this School Board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It's the School Board's protocol to break at 5:30 PM to prepare for the regular School Board meeting to follow at 6:00 PM. At 5:30 PM, the School Board will conclude its formal meeting unless the Board votes to continue until 5:45. The informal session will conclude no later than 5:45 PM in order to allow the Board and the School Administration to prepare for the regular School Board meeting. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please take role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in School Board chambers is Ms. Rye, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Edwards, Ms. Felton, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Owens. Attending the meeting via Zoom is Ms. Melnick, Ms. Hughes, and Ms. Manning.
And Mrs. Holtz is minutes, seconds away in the hall, and to that I'll add that Mrs. Melnick has asked to share that she just returned from out-of-state travel that involved airplane travel. So with that, so thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, Admin Matters and Reports. Just want to mention that at this point, we have three members participating in next week's NSBA convention, typically held in Williamsburg, but it will be virtual. So Mrs. Felton, who is our official delegate, Mrs. Anderson and myself have registered, and we thank Mrs.
And Ms. Owens also registered, Madam Chair.
Okay, good, that's good to know. Speaking of the SBA, there is a December 15 webinar having to do with collective bargaining, and we might be hearing something about that in the Legislative Report, I don't know. But I have asked the Chair, the Clerk, at the request of some of our colleagues, to register for that, and we would do it here in the building, a single fee, and then any members who wish to participate, and we will be putting out more information about that. And that is also a School Board meeting date, but the webinar is earlier in the afternoon. And the only other thing I have is that with regard to the Governance Committee, there is a draft of a protocols manual that the committee has put together, and Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Riggs took the lead on this, and we'll be asking you to pick up a hard copy at the conclusion of the workshop for you to return home with. And Mrs. Riggs, do you have something more to add to that?
Yeah, one of the committee members will be reaching out to you, so we'll have a one-on-one conversation with, just speaking about it and seeing if you have any concerns after you get it and you have a chance to look over it. We'll just kind of briefly go over it with each one.
Thank, thank you. Anybody else before we get to our first workshop agenda item? Yes, Mrs. Felton?
Thank you, Chair Rye. I'd just like to add to the VSBA announcement that normally we have a legislators coming together on breakfast. This year, due to the unprecedented situation that we're in, we will not be having that, and we will get an email out or an official letter out to our legislators to let them know where we stand, and we'll be meeting with them hopefully by next year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, with that, we will begin with our first agenda item, and we are welcoming, I'm welcoming, and I guess Mrs. Melnick too, we will allow her to weigh in, but we have here is our presenter, Mr. Andrews, with the School Board Legislative Agenda for the 2021 General Assembly Session. Mrs. Melnick, do you have any introductory remarks?
Girl, we all know, Joel, I'm looking forward to hearing that.
All right, sir, welcome.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for having me. It's great to be with you in person. I think it's been a while since I've seen all of you, so it's really great to be here. And I'm going to go over the legislative agenda that we've talked about with the Legislative Committee, but before I sort of get into that, I want to provide a little bit of background, a little bit of context. I don't know if you know this, but a lot has happened over the last six months, which is frame parts of our legislative package. So I might spend, if it's agree with you, Madam Chair, just a couple of minutes, kind of giving a little bit of context and overview of what's happened the last couple of months, and I think that will be helpful for the discussion about our legislative agenda. And I think this is my, ah, perfect, okay. So going back to March real quick, and I know we all don't want to revisit March, but just get to give you a little more context, as I said, we finished the General Assembly Session on March 12 about, and really, people were feeling pretty good about the budget. I think there was some uncertainty about how COVID might impact it, but overall, there's a lot of new investment for K-12 as well as a number of other things, and this was a pretty significant budget because the way our budget cycles and the gubernatorial elections line up, this is actually the only budget that the Governor sees through from sort of start to finish. So from the standpoint of priorities of the administration, this is where you see all those priorities. And so everyone was feeling pretty good about where things were. You know, sales tax collections were significantly higher than projected. Like I said, a lot of new investment in K-12, including teacher salaries and things like that. And then they adjourned and voted on the budget on March 12, which also happened to be the same day that the Governor declared a state of emergency for COVID. So that's all happening at the same time. And so they, everything kind of got popped. Okay. So as I mentioned, there was an allotment of all the new spending that the Governor had proposed in his budget, unfortunately, including the investments in K-12 and early education. As a result of also decrease in state revenues, there was also about $189 million hit to direct aid to K-12 due to the forecasted downturn in sales tax, which is a direct impact on schools. And so while we sort of finished session feeling pretty good, by the time we got through veto session, things were looking very, very difficult and very, very challenging. And so the, the General Assembly said, we are still not sure what the total impact is going to be on the budget. And so they forego making any final decisions on the budget and called for a special session later in the summer, early fall, to talk about how they're going to finally balance the budget. What started as just a discussion about the budget quickly grew into a discussion about the budget as well as about response to COVID and what specific things the General Assembly needed to do to COVID. And then the Journal, then the special session also kind of grew into from the budget to COVID to also budget COVID, and given the unrest and protests that were happening, not only in Virginia by a national basis, it also grew into social justice reform and criminal justice reform. So the scope of the special session really grew. They started on August 18, and I'm happy to say that they officially adjourned yesterday. So it is, it was an 87-day special session that really happened entirely virtually, which was proposed some very unique challenges, I think, for, for everyone. The Senate met in the Science Museum of Virginia so they could socially distance. The House, on the other hand, was fully virtual. All public comment and participation was done via Zoom, which was really interesting to hear, public testimony via Zoom. You saw all types of things, of people giving testimony in their cars and all types of places, which, which was some ways great because I think a lot of people were able to participate that would not ordinarily be able to participate in the process, maybe they can't make it to Richmond. It also created challenges because so much work, if you, if you come to Richmond and experience committee meetings, you can see there's a lot of banter back and forth during committees. And so it was hard to get that type of work done, but it was just a product of how they had to work because they still had to balance the budget, they still had to get some, a few things done. The other significant problem that we are facing during session is not only did we see the downturn in projected sales tax, which was about a $4 million per year hit to Virginia Beach, we also saw a significant decrease, as you know, in enrollment, which also reduced our ADM calculation, which was also a significant hit. So as we were working through special session, the two things that were really big priorities for us was getting the General Assembly to backfill the hit to sales tax as well as working on language that would sort of pause the ADM calculation until we got a better grip of what our actual school age, our, our population was. And those are two really significant things because those two things combined, I believe, were about a $10 million hit to Virginia Beach. I'm happy to report that fortunately, both of those things, as of right now, have been corrected. The General Assembly put in about $95 million in the first year of the biennial to backfill the sales tax loss, and they use revenue from what's called gray machines. So if you go to gas stations, you see little video games sitting off in the corner, those are called gray machines. They were set to sunset, but given the dire financial situation of the state, they saw them as a good revenue resource, and so those are continuing on, and they backfill the sales tax with revenue from those gray machines. And we were also able to get any reduction in the ADM, I'm sorry, in the, in the ADM calculation until after the March 31 ADM calculation. So we were not going to see the September 30 ADM calculation, which we start getting payments in January, that's going to all get pushed out to March 31. So it gives us a little more time to, to fix that. The other thing that we saw is about $221 million, I think you probably already know this, in CARES Act money, this was done by executive action but reaffirmed in the budget. And then we also saw the General Assembly restore some at-risk money, not all the at-risk money that the Governor and the General Assembly had originally put back in in March, but they restored some of that, as well as restoring some early education and BPI access. So overall, we finished special session, certainly not as great as, as it was looking in March, but given where we were between March and about a month ago, it really turned out to be much better than what, what could have happened, given the situation of where we are. So I will say that with the ADM and with the sales tax, the two things that they did with special session are really only temporary fixes, which is why I wanted to give you that context, because this goes into our legislative package here in a minute, because these are things that we're going to still be working on coming up in the 2021 session. And I also want to give you just a quick preview of what we think is going to happen come next year. We've already started pre-filing for the 2021 session, even though we just finished the special session. I haven't seen a whole lot of bills out there, only so far, one bill that I've seen that impacts K-12. It's a bill that we've seen before that would require school divisions to have a nurse in every single building. We still need to do some analysis on that to figure out how that's going to impact us, if at all. We'll see, the Governor will introduce in just about a month, a little over five weeks from now, his amendments to the current budget. So even though they just finished the budget, the Governor is going to submit new amendments to the budget come December. January 13 starts the short session, so this is a, a short session this year, so it's not a comprehensive budget session. There are rumors, and I stress that these are only rumors now, that session could potentially be shortened. Constitutionally, they only have to meet for 30 days. They always extended the extra 16 days for a 46-day session, but it only has to be 30 days. There's rumors that they might only do a 30-day session. There's also rumors about limiting the number of bills legislators can introduce. And I think this is all a product of, this was a very long, very difficult special session. They tackled a lot of difficult issues, and I think there's some fatigue, particularly with legislators right now, of going back in and having to do it all over again. So I think people are interested in trying to get in and out of Richmond as quickly as possible. In any case, we fully expect it to be either entirely virtual or mostly virtual. The rules have not yet been set for that. I would anticipate that the Senate will continue to meet in the Science Museum, as they have done before. It is possible, maybe likely, that the House will be fully virtual again, or at least some combination of virtual. And I would anticipate that from a public comment, public participation standpoint, it will also likely be from a virtual standpoint. So I, I would expect that test, committee testimony via Zoom, probably no in-person meetings. I don't think they'll let public into the building until certainly there's a viable vaccine that is widely available on the market. So I think it's going to be at least another year, year of all that. And also, just to fill you on a little bit good news, you think you've all been relieved that we are done with election season. I, I've, I'm happy to report that election season in Virginia is just about to get ramped up again. Next November, we have all statewide members up for reelection or election. Our Governor can only serve one consecutive term. And then the entire House will be up for reelection. So this will be a significant election year for Virginia. There's already been over a dozen candidates announced for Lieutenant Governor, many for Governor, many for Attorney General, so it's going to be a very, very interesting election year. And what we typically see in Virginia, because we are, we are the first significant statewide election post a presidential election, it's only Virginia and New Jersey that have gubernatorial elections at this point, and the entire nation sort of watches Virginia in particular about what is going to happen. And it also means that we end up getting a lot of sort of national money that flows into Virginia too, for these campaigns and for these elections, because, you know, a lot of people and a lot of groups outside of Virginia see, see this as an opportunity to impact, impact elections that are happening on a meaningful way. So I'm sorry, but we're, we're really going right back into election year. So that, that's a little bit of context, and I apologize for taking much of your time on that, but I thought it was important as we go talk about our legislative agenda for 2021. And given that we anticipate that it's going to be some potentially shorter session, certainly, I think the appetite of the General Assembly to take on complex and difficult issues is probably going to be limited, given the arduous special session. We've, we've shortened our legislative agenda a little bit just to reflect that and really focus on the things that we think we are going to be dealing with this session, as well as, you know, kind of the high priority things. Now, this is not to say this is going to be our positions on everything. As you know, we get lots of legislation that we are reacting to during session, lots of things that we take positions on, both for and against, so this doesn't preclude us from taking those positions. But we tried to focus from communication with our delegation and communication with the legislature, legislators on what our priorities are going to be. We wanted to keep a, a pretty succinct document. So as I mentioned, the two biggest priorities for us heading into this session are going to be extending that hold harmless for ADM for the entire year. So it's right now through March 31, we want to make that go through the entire year. I think there is going to be some appetite to do that. Kind of one of the reasons why the General Assembly did not do that during special session is just the unknown. We weren't, nobody was really sure what was going to happen with school enrollment as schools were going to reopen. Remember, they're making this decision really at the, at the end of September, beginning of October, when the numbers weren't really in. Everyone was still either mostly or fully virtual at that point across Virginia, and so there was a lot of speculation of what starts to happen when schools start to reopen in person. And so I think everyone wanted a little more time to figure out what the magnitude of the problem was before we have a permanent fix to that. But I think there is an appetite to go after a permanent fix to that. And the other part is to continue the sales tax hold harmless reduction into the second year of the biennial. So the backfill of the $95 million was only for the first year. So the first year were fine, the fat, and the next year, we still need to, to fix. And the, the primary reason why they didn't backfill the second year is again, they, nobody was certain what sales tax revenues were going to look like in the second year of the biennial. And so instead of backfilling with money that they may would not have to spend all of, or not knowing what that amount would be, they wanted to just take a pause, wait to see what those revenue projections were going to be, and then try to address it during the regular session of backfilling the second year. So again, I think there is an appetite to go after both of those things this General Assembly Session, which is why those are our two top priorities. So I, I think that's where we're going to likely spend a lot of our time, a lot of our focus is to ensure that we have a stable budget heading over the, the next year and a half year. As always, teacher salary increases, though, are a top priority if there is an opportunity and a mechanism for us to go after teacher salary increases, if revenues recover in such a way, certainly that's top priority. The, the budget currently has language in there that I, I would say requires or encourages the Governor to look at teacher compensation in the second year of the budget, so certainly something that people are still thinking about, certainly a priority of the administration, and I think of the General Assembly. Support cap has been on our list for years, and we will keep plugging away at that. We'll continue to see if we can make progress on that. And again, increased supports for behavioral and mental health staff has been a priority for, for us. There's getting a lot more attention, particularly on that piece, as students have been at home and families have been at home, because I think, and I'm sure you all see this, the concern over the mental health of our children is growing more and more, I think acute, and, and people are focusing in on that more. It was interesting, I was listening to a Joint Commission on Healthcare meeting earlier this week, and this was actually a topic of conversation of, do, they're going to start looking at what are the mental health effects of COVID on particularly school-aged children. So I know this is going to be a priority for, for the General Assembly over the next couple of years. Special education, education services, again, this has been on our legislative package, package for the last year or so. This has taken a, I think, a, maybe a, we've refocused on it a little bit because of providing services through the pandemic and meeting IEPs and things like that. There's going to be some real challenges around that, so ensuring that we don't have any additional obstacles and where we can find additional help from the General Assembly to meet those needs of our students, we'll certainly be, be after that. And then finally, dedicated state funding for capital improvements. This is something that the General Assembly hasn't really funded in a number of years. I will say that with the legislation that passed this past General Assembly Session dealing with casinos, which you're probably all familiar with, because there was two casinos on the referendum in Hampton Roads, not Virginia Beach, but Norfolk and Portsmouth, there is some dedicated funding that comes out of that for cap improvement for schools. It's not nearly probably what we need on a statewide basis, but it is something that we're kind of moving in the right direction on. So that, that's going to be also a, a priority. A couple of things that we have, just so you know, we, we've removed a couple of things from, from that. One would be the supplanting lottery funds. This is an issue that we've had to face in previous downturns where they will take things that are generally funded through the SOQs or general fund and then supplant those dollars with lottery fund dollars, which only reduces the amount of lottery fund dollars. I don't anticipate that's going to be a problem this year. Obviously, if we do see that, something that we would, would adamantly oppose, but I don't think we're going to see that, which is why it's not part of our legislative package right now. And then from a legislative standpoint, continue to fight unfunded mandates. We have, I think, last I looked, we have about 20, I think maybe $40 million in unfunded mandates from a federal and state standpoint. A lot of that has to do actually with special education. So we will, we will continue to oppose those pieces of legislation. And then continued assessment reform. This is, this pandemic has also created some interesting conversations that are starting to happen around assessment reform, particularly as students have not been required to, to take SOLs. And what does that mean for going forward? Do we need to revisit our entire assessment system? So I think that may not be a conversation for this General Assembly Session, but I certainly, it will probably be a significant conversation coming up in 2022. But as we see opportunities and legislation around that, certainly we would, we would be at the forefront of those conversations. The, the only other two items that were, were removed, one was parity around dual enrollment, that's an issue we've been working on for a couple of years, and then also on charter schools. And again, I don't think our position on charter schools has changed, but given the composition of the General Assembly, as well as the position of the administration on charter schools, I don't anticipate charter schools being a significant issue for K-12 or really coming up for discussion, certainly in, in the near future in any sort of significant way. So that's why we kind of narrowed our legislative agenda, really focusing on those first two items, which would be the hold harmless for ADM and hold harmless for the sales tax reductions for 2021. So I, I know I went through that very quickly, but I'm happy to, to answer any questions that you, that you might have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Beginning with Mr. Edwards.
The ADM adjustment in, on March 31, as it stands now, is that retroactive, or is that, are we held harmless for all ADM that would have flowed to us through the end of March?
So that, that is a great question. As it stands right now, which is why this is going to be a priority issue for us, everything is paused until the March 31 calculation. I can't imagine it would happen conceivably if the General Assembly took no action at all on this, on this issue. It, it, it could be a problem moving forward, but what we don't have is we are not going to be having our allotment of those funds reduced starting in January. So that's conceivably, if they did nothing, then it, it would be, if, we would not be held harmless, they would actually look back for over the whole course of the year. But I, I, like I said, I, I don't envision that happening at this point. The only, the other good news about the ADM issue that we are facing is these are dollars that have already been budgeted and allocated, and so they don't have to come up with new money to fully fund ADM, because they're still using the projections from last year, which are already built into the budget. So it's unlike sales tax, they don't have to go and find, you know, $100 million to fully fund ADM, because those dollars currently exist in the budget. The only risk is if there is another priority that they decide is going to take precedence over that, and they need to go find money, they could conceivably come after those dollars. But at this point, I, I feel as confident as I can that I think we'll be able to extend that through the entire year.
Okay, that's potentially more than huge.
Yes.
The nurse in every school, would that be an adjustment to SOQ?
And that's what we have to do a little more, I need to get a better grip on that. How nurses are currently funded is based upon...
That, that could be a win for us.
It, it could be a win. It could also potentially not be a win for us, depending on kind of how that breaks down. I think for some schools, it's a win, for some schools, it's not a win, because if they just swap out one nurse for every school versus the one nurse per, and I can't remember the exact number, one nurse per X number of students, depending on what that breakdown is, we could either get more funding for nurses, or we could get less funding for nurses. And so what the hope is for a lot of people is, okay, well, if you want to fund one nurse for every school, don't penalize school divisions that might already be doing that, but would actually lose money if you changed the SOQ allocation to that.
Okay, looks like January is pretty important. Wow, okay.
Mrs. Felton?
Thank you, Chair Rye. That you brought up the, Joel, good presentation, thank you. You brought up the continual reform of assessment system, and you brought a particular testing of the SOLs. I don't know if this is appropriate to ask now, because it's dedicated to Virginia Beach, I want to ask about Virginia Beach. The SOLs, there is a lot of miscommunication about taking it and not taking it for our students, and if not you to answer it, maybe one of our own to answer it. And if not you to answer it, maybe one of our own could answer it. Will our kids, our students be asked to take the SOLs? I know last year pertaining to last year, there were some federal and state recommendations that were put forth. So this year, I just need to understand, and the parents and the students need to understand the recommendation for this year for SOLs, taking and not taking.
I got a friend.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for your question, Ms. Felton. So you all might be aware that we just put a notice out in the last couple of days to families about the SOL testing for grades eight and 11 for writing. Maybe that's creating some questions in the community around SOL testing. The reason we're doing some testing, by the way, this fall, when we normally would do most of our testing in the spring, is a result of the block schedule. So eighth graders and 11th graders who currently are in English would be taking an end-of-course assessment, which is now, which is, which is about to happen. So our option-two students who are not coming in for in-person learning, we just sent a notice home to the parents, letting them know that if they wish for their child to participate in SOL testing, that they could, that we would bus them in, or the parents could bring them in on a Monday, and we would do that, that required testing. Your question about is testing required?
Yes.
Yeah, it is. It's required by the state and by the federal government. So there's a federal requirement under the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA. We are required in Virginia and, and other states that have agreements with the federal government under ESSA to test students in math and reading at every grade level, starting in third grade up through high school, and certain courses in high school. Most of that testing will happen in the spring, assuming it'll happen in the spring. And then there's a state requirement for testing, which is for a verified credit. So that's typically high school students who need a, a verified credit if they take an SOL test. Last year in the 1920 school year, Secretary of Education Bessie DeVos waived the federal requirement during the 1920 school year. She has not made an announcement about waiving the federal requirement for the current school year. It's not to say that she couldn't in the coming months, or that the new administration and a new Secretary of Education could waive that requirement in the spring. Today, the federal requirement is not waived. The state requirement last school year was also waived for verified credit. So we were permitted as a school division to find other ways for students to demonstrate mastery of learning and to award the verified credit. To date, the secretary, the State Superintendent of Instruction, James Lane, has not waived state testing requirements for verified credits. Not to say that he couldn't in the spring, but he hasn't as of today. So that's why we proceeded with an announcement this week to our eighth graders and 11th graders who need the verified credit, or who are currently scheduled on the block schedule to, to come in and take the test. All that stated, if a parent does not want their child to test, then they can simply communicate that to us. The student will not be penalized for not taking the SOL test. There will be no accreditation, so there'll be no testing towards accreditation this year as there wasn't last year. The only reasons for testing are because it's required by federal law under ESSA and for verified credit. Does that answer your question?
It does answer my question. And so we are going forward. Is any indication that, that might come down that is not required this year? Is indication, any indication at all? And are we just moving because, because precaution?
Yeah, we're, we're proceeding as, as though, you know, there'll be no waiving of the state or the federal requirement. Again, they were waived last year. Can't say what's going to happen in the spring. Most school divisions are not having this conversation right now, because they're not on the block. So we would be having, all school divisions are going to have this conversation come next, next semester in the February, March, April, May timeframe.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, because as you said, it is confusing-
Yeah.
-to, to most, if not all, when you don't get all the clarification of what you're saying. And that you stated that it is a federal and state recommendation, and we're moving forward as if they said that we need to do this. And you're saying too that if the student decides not to take it, this, does this apply to all students, even seniors? If they decide not to take it, they will not be penalized?
So if, if I may-
Okay.
One, in the interest of time, and two, because we're off the topic of the agenda. If we could, we, we would be happy to come back and do another accountability workshop with the board and go through those processes and the testing requirements, just to make sure you all are clear and our community is clear again. Would that be acceptable?
Thank you, Dr. Spence. And as I mentioned earlier, I don't know if it was appropriate now to, to bring this in, and I do appreciate you bringing that in. Yes, I can wait for that. Thank you so much.
Okay. We have Mrs. Weems.
Yes, and I don't know, Joel, if this is a question for you or Dr. Spence, if you want to add, but in, in reference to the delivering quality special education services, that's very broad, obviously. I mean, are you talking about more training, especially design instruction? Is it talking about more hands-on deck, IEP development, changes in rate, student-teacher ratios for inclusion? I mean, where, where do you see most of that going?
I'm Chair, Ms. Weems. This, that part of our legislative agenda is the same language that we included last year, which is much more broad about ensuring that we are looking at sufficient and adequate dedicated state funding for special education. As you know, there's a lot of requirements, particularly from the feds on special education, but the amount of money they provide for that is not nearly sufficient to meet those requirements. And so that is where our focus has been.
Okay. So it's basically all the millions of dollars at the, at, at the federal level, even more so than at the state level, correct?
That's right.
Of, of unfunded, okay. I just wanted to know if there was a priority of where that would go if we get it-
And we've also talked about in there about, you know, process improvements to ensure that, you know, special education works, I guess, the, the IEP facilitation works better, you know, all those types of things is really what we've been working on. I'll, I'll say that Ms. Lynetti and I have been involved with the work group with numerous stakeholders, talking about those very issues, about, you know, the role of IEP facilitators, the role of parent advocates, the role of the parents, the role of the school division, trying to come to, I think, a whole lot more consensus on how that process should work. So hopefully coming out of that work group, we might have some more specific concrete recommendations around that. But these, these are really, I'd say, the same issues we've been dealing with on special education for, for a very, very long time.
Okay. Miss, Madam Clark, any of our Zoom participants? Okay. Can I just, and I might have, so this might, this is either for you, Mr. Andrews, or for Mrs. Melnick. Where does this go from here, what we're looking at on the screen?
So I believe we have our full legislative agenda. This is obviously just the, the sort of the highlight components, and I'll let Ms. Melnick answer as far as the, the next steps, but I think it will go to the full, you know, board for a vote.
Mrs. Melnick?
Yeah.
Asking about the agenda, what the next steps are, because I'm leading up to also a delegate call to me before stepping in here, who's waiting for what we're interested in? Okay.
I'm sorry, what is your exact question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, what is the next step with this legislative agenda package?
We just bring it to the board and, and the board votes, and we move forward. We're presenting a smaller version to, correct, Joel? We're presenting our top five to our legislators. They'll get the entire, they'll get the entire thing, but we are going to kind of focus on our top five. That's it. You've been given everything.
And who communicates that to the delegates?
We, we do as a division.
Okay. And the delegates just want to-
Know too that there's now a November 30th filing date, that-
That's right. We, we don't have any specific piece of legislation that we will be pushing this year. The deadlines for us will certainly be looking at what the governor's introduced budget looks like, and then filing budget amendments based upon that budget will probably be where our focus will be this year, which is a much later deadline. That deadline won't be until January.
Okay, folks, is that it? So our thanks to you and our legislative committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you all.
So that brings us to an information item that was a, was a COVID victim. It was originally on, I think, the first forecast of this year. But we are now ready to address our CSEP information session, and we're starting out with Dr. Myers-Dobbs. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Ronnie Myers-Dobbs, Executive Director of Programs for Exceptional Children. Today, Mike McGee, Director of Student Leadership, David Sadler, Executive Director of Southeastern Cooperative Education Programs, and I will be sharing an overview of CSEP and the programs offered to support students. So Mr. Sadler is going to start us off first by going over the different programs.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Again, you have some slides, if you want to go to the next slide. A CSEP was formed in 1978. A group of superintendents in Hampton Roads completed a study, and they formed the Southeastern Cooperative Education Programs, better known as CSEP, which is a regional special education program. This is aligned to the regulations governing special education programs, and we are managed by our Joint Board comprised of a school board member from each participating school division that meets regularly and functions like a school board, and our Committee of Superintendents comprised of the superintendents from each of the A participating divisions that recommends items for consideration by the board. And Ms. Melnick is our current representative for the CSEP Joint Board. A CSEP serves the following divisions: Chesapeake, Franklin, Isle of Wight, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Southampton County, Suffolk, and Virginia Beach. Since its inception, Norfolk Public Schools has served as our fiscal agent. Therefore, all revenues and expenditures flow through Norfolk Public Schools. So the READ program was begun. We started serving students in 1979. Reeducation again is based on the work of Nicholas Hobbs out of Tennessee, North Carolina area. The autism program soon followed in 1981. These programs started off as center-based programs. So we had centers beginning in Virginia Beach, and Suffolk, and in Chesapeake. In 1988, the EBICS program was begun. EBICS is the Educational and Behavioral Interventions for Challenging Students Program. This program serves mainly students with multiple disabilities. The next program that came on board was our TRAP program, the Tidewater Regional Alternative Education Program. We inherited this from Portsmouth Public Schools, who had originally run the regional alternative program. So we took that on in 1995 at the request of superintendents. And then our final program that came on board, again, at the request, I think, of Norfolk Public Schools, due to their notification from VDOE, they no longer could collect foster care payments for the students at St. Mary's and transition, Lake Taylor Transitional Hospital. So they asked that CSEP take over that program, the educational program. Again, these students are at St. Mary's and Lake Taylor Transitional due to other things other than educational need. So they are not there for their educational services, but for their health needs. And they need to still be served and meet their special education needs and their IEPs. And we do have a general description of each program as well in following slides, starting again with the READ program. Again, we're serving primarily students with emotional disabilities in our READ program. And it stresses the academic competence with a focus on responsibility to others. Core academic instruction is supplemented by programs for literacy remediation, social skills, and group process. And middle and high school students are also eligible for instruction in culinary arts, agriculture, and we're trying to bring back our barbering program. We lost our barber, so we've tried to get another barber so we can do that. Most of these classrooms are staffed with two licensed teachers, one of whom is a special education teacher and acts as the special ed case manager for those students. And classrooms, again, have eight to 10 students. The Autism Spectrum Program serves students eligible for special education services who are identified as having autism and exhibiting significant interfering behaviors. Applied behavioral analysis or ABA principles and procedures, as well as other methodologies, are utilized to structure and organize the educational environment to promote learning. There are generally five to seven students in each classroom, and typically, we have a student-staff ratio of two to one. The EBICS program, again, Education and Behavioral Interventions for Challenging Students, serves students eligible for special education, again, identified as having intellectual disabilities and exhibit significant interfering behaviors. We typically want to see the multiple disability category for these students, because the multiple disability, multiple disability is the reimbursable ID from VDOE. ABA principles and procedures are also, and other methodologies are also utilized in this program to structure and organize the educational environment to promote learning. And again, there are four to five students in each of these classrooms, and typically it is again a two to one ratio. Tidewater Regional Alternative Education Program is an academic program for students in grades six through 12 that have not achieved success in their traditional classroom setting. And the program serves students with and without disabilities. We offer credit-bearing classes, GED instruction, and literacy remediation, and provide a continuum of educational options. Students also receive daily social skills training. Typically, classrooms serve 10 to 15 students. And again, these are students placed with us due to disciplinary issues within their local schools. And again, the final program, raising expectations and abilities for children with complex health needs. REED serves students who have intellectual disabilities and complex health needs. And again, we're looking for that multiple disability category there. And these students live in a residential facility. Currently, we operate at Lake Taylor Transitional Care Hospital and St. Mary's Home. Classrooms are staffed with a team that consists of a special education teacher and two teaching assistants.
Thank you.
Okay. So CSEP has classrooms at elementary, middle, and high school, level at various BBCPS comprehensive schools. So at six elementary schools, we have 20 classrooms. At three middle schools, we have eight classrooms. And then at four high schools, we have 13 classrooms. CSEP also has two centers. There's an elementary center in a wing at Windsor Woods Elementary School. It has seven classrooms for READ, ASP, and EBICS. And then there's a middle school and high school center in a wing of Renaissance Academy, and there's 23 classrooms there, with classrooms serving READ, TRAP, ASP, and EBICS programs. So Virginia Beach CSEP enrollment as of October 21st, so the first column you can see, those are the number of seats that we have that are either guaranteed or budgeted. And then the next column is the students that are currently enrolled in each program. So for the next couple of slides, I'm going to talk a little bit about what the IEP does, IEP team does in preparation for looking at whether a student requires a more restrictive setting, such as one of the programs in CSEP, as well as the process of reintegrating a student back into our comprehensive school setting. So prior to school staff initiating a CSEP referral for a student for READ, ASP, or EBICS, we want to ensure first that they utilize the division resources to support staff working with the student, such as the behavior intervention specialists, the instructional specialists, and/or coordinators. We want to also make sure that the team has considered the continuum of special education services within the school setting, looking at both the general education and special education setting within the comprehensive school. If a student's behavior is impeding the student's learning or that of others, the IEP team must consider either developing goals and services specific to the student's- specific to the student's behavior needs or conducting a functional behavior assessment and determining the need for a behavior intervention plan to address the student's behavior needs. So for the referral process, and then this is really the typical referral process. It may not look exactly the same for every student, but this is the typical process of that. So the slide represents the general process for consideration of student placement in READ, ASP, or EBICS program. An OPEC coordinator assigned to the building is typically a member of the IEP team throughout the process. During the first IEP team meeting, the IEP team reviews the academic and behavioral data as well as current interventions being used to address the student's areas of need. Parent consent is required for evaluation, which at this point would consist of a CSEP administrator conducting an observation and reviewing the student's record. So after that is done, the team will reconvene at the second IEP meeting. The CSEP administrator attends and reviews the observation and may also present recommendations of other interventions that could be used to address the student's needs based on the observation that they had. The team discusses the recommendation and proposes any changes to the IEP to address academics and/or the interfering behaviors. And again, there's some time to ensure that those interventions are implemented and that data is collected. So during the third IEP meeting, the team discusses the student's progress. If the student is not making progress and the behavior is not changing with implementation of the interventions, the team may consider placement in one of the regional school programs, which at that point, this is READ, ASP, or EBICS. And again, parent consent is required for the placement of the student in any of those programs. So on the next slide, I'm going to talk about, you know, on the back end, once a student has been in one of those programs and we're looking at reintegrating that student back to a comprehensive school setting, again, it involves multiple IEP meetings. So this slide represents the general process for consideration of a student to return to the comprehensive school setting, which is a less restrictive environment, from READ, ASP, or EBICS programs. And once again, an OPEC coordinator assigned to the building is typically a member of the IEP team during the discussion of reintegration. So prior to the first IEP meeting occurring, the OPEC coordinator will observe the student in the current CSEP classroom. The coordinator and a representative from the student's home school attends the IEP meeting. The team reviews the student's progress, and if the data supports the student moving to a less restrictive setting, the team will discuss a plan for the student to do a number of visits to the home school and participate in classroom activities with the support from CSEP staff. So during the second meeting, the team reviews the student's progress as well as discusses the student's visits to the home school. And if reintegration is proposed by the IEP team, once again, parent consent is required for the change in placement to return to the less restrictive setting at the comprehensive school. So now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McGee, who's going to share some information related to TRAP.
Welcome, Mr. McGee.
Thank you. The Office of Student Leadership utilizes placements at TRAP for discipline hearing decisions and alternative placements under certain circumstances. These circumstances include students transferring from another district due to a change in residence or group home placement in Virginia Beach, students who are transitioning from the Department of Juvenile Justice Release, and students with criminal charges that qualify for an alternative placement under Rule 30. The charts on the slide show totals for both hearing placements and alternative placements during the last two school years. The placement process for students in alternative education typically cycles from a student's comprehensive school setting to Renaissance Academy to TRAP, to Renaissance Academy, and then back to the comprehensive school setting. Standard placement length at TRAP from Renaissance Academy is one semester. This timeframe is used in an effort to allow students ample time to show improvement in behavior, return to Renaissance, and then continue with success and return to the comprehensive school setting without an extensive length of time between transitions. Once a student is returned to Renaissance Academy from TRAP, they typically also have a semester of transition placement. However, if a student has shown excellent progress at TRAP, Renaissance placement can be cut to a quarter as long as the original placement at Renaissance Academy has been completed. This adjustment in transition has been communicated to students as an incentive for progress. Because discipline is meant to teach and not to punish, exit criteria is in place for students who are eligible to leave TRAP. The exit criteria is evidence of student growth, illustrating appropriate behavior, and a dedication to learning. The exit criteria was presented to students at TRAP in order to ensure expectations are clear and to convey the Office of Student Leadership's support of their growth. The three areas examined are attendance, grades, and discipline. In regards to attendance, students should have no more than six unverified or unexcused absences. Students are encouraged to attend school daily, which is paramount for both learning and our ability to see that their behavior has shown improvement in the school setting. In examining grades, we are able to see a commitment to learning. Our benchmark is a C or above in each class. However, because we know that our students are at a different, at our, at different ability levels, we also consider a student's previous performance with grades, ability reflected in test scores, and effort as reported by instructors. Because a student's conduct is the reason for placement at TRAP, we expect to see this as a major area of growth. A student must not have any major incidents, nor any incidents of the same nature as the reason for his or her placement at TRAP. Additionally, a student should not have more than two minor incidents. The Office of Student Leadership has partnered with TRAP on communicating expectations for students exiting the program. As I mentioned earlier, exit requirements were shared with students at TRAP during a presentation by the Office of Student Leadership. TRAP's staff also works diligently with students on an ongoing basis to remind them of the expectations and the support for them in reaching their goals. During this past school year, the consistency between recommendations made by TRAP and approvals by the Office of Student Leadership have increased to an average of 81%. We feel this is very beneficial as students know that TRAP and the Office of Student Leadership have common and consistent expectations. As the board is probably most likely familiar, if a student is recommended for termination from TRAP, the Office of Student Leadership is immediately notified of the recommendation and arrangements are made for TRAP's termination hearing. A coordinator from the Office of Student Leadership attends the termination hearing as a representative of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. During that hearing, the coordinator is able to answer questions that the parent may have regarding the Virginia City Public Schools' process to follow. The coordinator also compiles a termination hearing summary during the meeting. The summary includes the date of the hearing, the student's name, a list of participants, and an outline of the hearing's events. After the termination hearing, the coordinator provides the hearing summary and the TRAP termination packet to myself, the director of the Office of Student Leadership. TRAP then makes a recommendation to either permit the student's return to TRAP or terminate the student's services. Termination timeframes range from a remainder of the school year to one year or to a permanent termination. Once the decision has been made, TRAP provides a copy of the decision letter to the Office of Student Leadership. The Office of Student Leadership then arranges a placement hearing in order to determine what the student's placement with Virginia Beach City Public Schools will be. The coordinator's hearing summary and the TRAP termination packet are included in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools' hearing packet. The Virginia Beach City Public Schools' hearing is most frequently heard by a school board discipline committee. As you can see from the chart, terminations are rare. There have been no terminations this past school year, and what likely got the attention of the board and somewhat prompted this meeting were the eight terminations of the previous school year. And at this point, any and all of us, Mr. Sadler, Ronnie Myers-Dobb, or myself, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, starting with Mrs. Owens.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for kind of laying that out for us. Can you kind of help me understand what, if any, oversight Virginia Beach Public Schools has over the CSEP program and their employees and processes, if you will?
Thank you for that question. Again, in our facility at RA and at our wing in Windsor Woods, we have a principal who is there onsite to oversee and work with the teaching staff. We also have what we call educational specialists who work in our TRAP program and our READ program to work with students, to work on behavioral issues, instructional issues. And then we are in close communication with Virginia Beach Public Schools to keep abreast. Again, we send out progress reports on a four-and-a-half-week basis so that they can track how kids are doing. If there are issues, then we try to collaborate and work through issues before it gets to the point where we have to suspend or terminate. So those are the types of oversight that we have. We also have a assistant director who oversees our principals and is there to assist with, again, behavioral programming, instructional programming, and then monitors the principals to make sure they're following through what they need to follow through with.
Okay, so those are all CSEP employees?
Correct.
Kind of based through CSEP and Norfolk Schools. I mean, we're housing them. But other than housing the program, as far as oversight or any authority, if you will, Beach Public Schools doesn't have any? Is that correct?
You have authority over the students. Again, the CSEP Joint Board has authority over the staff. So again, the staff are hired and dismissed through the CSEP Joint Board. And again, we follow the VDOE process for evaluating our staff. So if we have issues, then again, we follow a progressive discipline with those staff. But they are CSEP employees, so the oversight stays with us. Not that we are not in collaboration with Ronnie and with Mike McGee about issues that may be occurring.
Right. You know, they are still Virginia Beach City Public School students, and so we are the local education agency. So the coordinators actually are either consulted or attend face-to-face or virtually now all the IEPs for the students with disabilities that are in those programs. So we have constant involvement in that process. They're also evaluated, you know, when it's up for the reevaluation. We have a team that works with CSEP staff through that reevaluation process as well.
Okay, that's helpful. And then I guess I, can I do one more? Okay. In terms of services and things that can happen through CSEP that don't happen through Virginia Beach Public regular programming, one thing that has come up as questions is restraint and that kind of restraint processes. Can you tell us a little bit about what is, how that's monitored? What's allowed, and is there differences in the different cities? Or is it just a CSEP overall protocol? And is that something that we know about? Like, how often are Virginia Beach students are being restrained?
That's a nice question as well, especially now that the state regulations on seclusion and restraint are effective January 1. CSEP's been very proactive in restraints. We utilize restraint, we utilize seclusion. All of our staff are trained initially with a two-day training. We have migrated to Handle With Care as our physical management system for restraint. And again, we, again, part of the principal's job is to monitor those restraints. So we have electronic means. As those restraints and those incidents are entered into the CSEP synergy, where we maintain that information, those things then get automatically, every two restraints now, over two days, get notified to the principal. So the principal is aware and monitoring that. Again, we had adopted much of the regulation prior to it becoming effective. So again, we have already started the process when there is a two-restraints over two days in a school year, reconvening for our students with disabilities, an IEP meeting, and those students under a 504 plan, a meeting for that. And even students who are regular at students, meeting with a comprehensive team to look at, what can we do differently to prevent those restraints or seclusions occurring in the future? Which, again, is what the new regulations thrust is, is how do we prevent? And using positive behavioral interventions and supports. And that's a key process in making sure that we are getting reduction. Again, we will be providing, based on the new regulation, to each of our divisions, the numbers of restraint-seclusions on an annual basis. We have notified verbally our parents every year now, starting in January. They'll be getting a written report as well. As far as formal, at our special ed, alt ed directors' meeting, I will look at numbers at times to inform those folks what our restraints are, what numbers are looking like.
Okay. When we get those numbers, it's something that we can talk further about. One of the things that I want to make sure that we are able to look at is the different breakdowns, ages, races, socio, all of those things. As we're moving forward with our equity policy and our equity audit, I know that we won't have oversight to look at the CSEP program because it's not our program. But hopefully, we're receiving enough information that we'll still be able to look at our students within that, our equity audits and making sure that there aren't concerns that need to be addressed that way.
And from our database, we can pull those demographics to attach to the students so that you can see as a LEA what those breakdowns are, so that you are aware. If you're questioned, you can see what those, see what the breakdowns are. And that will be part of what I'll talk with special ed directors and our alt ed directors, as well as our superintendents committee, of what that data source, what that data format should look like as we provide it this school year.
Great, thank you.
All righty.
Okay, Mrs. Williams.
Yeah, sorry, David. So the buildings that actually house CSEP classrooms are like 13 now. So has that gone down in the last few years at the building locations? Have the classrooms gone down or up? And then, as far as the enrollment, your slide 10, you know, it goes from, some of the programs are, you know, 25% to 30% enrollment all the way up to the Autism Spectrum Program is at 85%, which I would, I understand why that's high, but none of them are full. So my question is, is this about the same in the last three or four years as far as buildings that house a number of classrooms, a number of students? Or has the number gone down because Virginia Beach Public Schools is servicing more in our classrooms? Can you just?
It's an ebb and flow. Again, right now, I ran data this morning. Again, right now, we have 231 ASP students and 52 EBICS students enrolled or sitting in classrooms today. That number tends to move up as we go through the school year. So as we're setting up classroom space, we're looking at what the division feels are reasonable projections for enrollment so that we're providing or setting up those classroom spaces and teachers so that we can absorb as students are referred through the referral process that Dr. Dobbs went through. So again, we're low census now. We're about 50 kids down totally in our ASP program. Again, we budget it for 520 students, and right now, we have 450 across all CSEP localities. So again, that tends to ebb and flow. Last year, we were up in September because we had a lot of referrals over the summer, and those kids came. and those kids came then in the 2019-20 school year. My first year as director in 2016, I inherited another low number, which again, I had to freeze teacher positions and protect our budget because again, we don't hire all the teachers that are budgeted. We look at what our projected enrollments are going to be, work with our divisions in setting up classroom spaces and making sure we're hiring over the summer the teachers that are going to be needed for that. So does it change? Yes. It's very variable. It's again, a snapshot in time when we run the data. But historically, it's moved up through the school years.
Right.
This year, I'm not so sure. Because we have a lot of students who are virtual, and again, you have a lot of students who are virtual. So again, they're not going to be in the classrooms exhibiting the behaviors that tend to then warrant the need for that referral process to kick in. So this school year, we may not get back up to where some numbers were. But when things change, hopefully in the fall of '21, we may see an uptick because now we've got kids coming back into a consistent classroom who may have regressed as far as their ability to self-manage their behaviors. That typically is what then generates the division staff working to try to bring them back to baseline. But if they can't, then they may consider, again, bringing them back into CSEP or bringing them to CSEP.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, you know, because I was on the CSEP board for years and years and years. And I don't know, when I gave my report, I just kind of remember thinking, yeah, we're housed at 22 schools. For some reason, I didn't know, it said 13 just struck me as being low as far as number of schools, but maybe I'm just mistaken.
Well, we have, and again, what we've asked our divisions to do is where possible, cluster some of those classrooms.
Okay.
Because again, that then helps us utilize our resources more efficiently. When we only have one classroom or two classrooms in a building, we still have to send support. We need to have the principal going out, doing observations. Whereas if we have four or five classrooms together.
Okay, good.
Then that principal may only have two sites rather than three or four sites.
Right, okay. So that's, that's the difference. Okay, well, that's good to know because that is much more efficient. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Edwards.
Some follow-up to what Mrs. Williams was asking on the slots that are allocated to Virginia Beach. Is that based on what, a budget number that, that your office generates and puts in and the board approves and then that go, that's, that's how they staff our allocations?
Yes, so we usually, we look at what our current enrollment is, and then we do look at some of the patterns over the previous years and what our referrals have looked like. And it is really a projection based on historical data because we do have to provide that information to Mr. Sadler so they can make a projection on the staff they'll need for the classrooms.
It may not be a fair question for you, but do you know the trends? Have we been increasing these allocations every year or has it been fairly flat?
Student or teachers? You're talking about increase in student referrals?
No, 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 the actual, the budget. The budget.
And again, I think it kind of depends because when I first came on board, we had a slight decline. And then my second year on, we had an increase, especially at the lower grade level. We saw an increase in that need. And even last year, we had to work with Mr. Sadler in making some shift within the REED program within their classrooms to provide a couple other spots for some of our younger students that needed the support of these programs. So it really varies, and we do work very closely with Mr. Sadler in trying to make the adjustments as we see the need throughout the school year. It is, it's a projection, and sometimes we over-project and sometimes we under-project. So, you know, we have to use the historical data to make the best estimate that we can.
For all of us who sit student discipline, it's very helpful to have the programs as an, as an option. This, this morning, we had a case where the flexibility of your program was, was helpful in the placement that we did. The, are we learning, and again, this is probably a question for, are we learning anything in terms of virtual instruction through TRAP, through this forced virtual that we've, that we're going through? What, one of the, you know, in terms of flexibility and ability to tap programs outside the brick walls that, you know, in the future may provide, like, the student we had this morning was a very gifted student who needed your structure. And we, you know, had we placed him in, in a Virginia Beach setting, the homeschool, they would not have had the same options that potentially you had. But are, is virtual, are you looking downstream in terms of being able to do potentially more or not?
Well, we definitely want to keep virtual on the table now that we've sort of been forced into it. So again, what we've done over the summer, and we're still in the process of getting our, our folks geared up, we adopted Schoology as our learning management system, similar to what Virginia Beach has. We also acquired a license for Edgenuity, which gives us core content information and instruction that we can provide our teachers that can be distributed virtually. But we found that will also help us in our face-to-face because it provides teachers a lot of instructional resources. So again, the virtual environment is potentially another means to serve students temporarily who may, again, be having difficulties in the classroom. But here's the thing, we need them in school so that we can help them learn how to manage themselves in those structured settings. It's really difficult for us to do that in a virtual environment. Because again, the behaviors that the parent may be seeing at home are very different than what maybe our teachers see because our teachers tend to be more systematic in applying constant or consistent expectations. And again, we know our kiddos will fight against that. And those are some of the times that we have to then be sure we're using good positive supports and intervention, having good reinforcement systems for kids. That's what helps shape that behavior. And our goal is, we don't want to keep these kids. We want all of our students to transition back to the less restrictive environment. That's our ultimate, ultimate goal for these students because that's where we think it's best for them. However, we have, you know, a handful or more each year, kids that are doing well with us. They could go back, but mom, dad, and the students say, no, he's doing so well, we want them to stay. So we then have to really work to get them back into the school system and show, yeah, you can be successful back here as well. So that's our ultimate goal.
The.
I'm sorry, I need to weigh in because we need to get on to the next topic. So I was gonna suggest.
This question ties to that directly. Are your classes, you know, the return to school based on the building they're located in or NPS policy?
All in Virginia Beach. We're following Virginia Beach's policy because you have to transport these students.
That was, I thought it was.
So we have to follow those, and that's been our difficulty. We've had seven different reopening policies we've had to accommodate, so.
Okay.
I think that was the question. So you're governed by the individual districts and what? So I think a few of us have more questions than if we can follow up. And would you prefer we go through you, Dr. Myers-Dobb, or directly with questions so that we can get on to our next agenda topic?
That's fine, you can have your man if I need to work with Mr. Sadler.
And then we'll determine if those responses are warrant sharing with the full board, you know, online. Okay. Thank you all so very much. And just appreciate this, providing the history, the context that that provided, and just, you know, just all, so informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have Dr. Bergen and updates on the reopening of schools in terms of what's been going. This is more, this workshop presentation is more focused, if you all want to pull out your brochure here, on, you're really going to update us on, on what's been going on virtually, yes, sir? And, and in school?
Yes, ma'am. So, good afternoon, board members and Dr. Spence. It is my pleasure to be here with you again, with other members of our senior leadership team, so we can update you on our ongoing efforts to support students in both the virtual and in-person instructional environments. I'm going to begin this presentation by reviewing our current health metrics. We could go ahead and thank you. Our current health metrics for the eastern region to show the trend over the past seven months. And then I'll be followed by Dr. Robertson, who will share our ongoing plans for the return of in-person instruction for the remaining option-one secondary students. He'll be followed by Dr. Rogers, who will provide an update on professional learning for teachers in regards to concurrent instruction. Following Dr. Rogers will be Mary Shaw, Coordinator of Health Services, who will provide additional information about our efforts for monitoring the health metrics and the data trends. And then we will conclude this workshop with Dr. Spence sharing the administration's recommendation regarding the return of additional secondary students before then addressing your questions. So this is a familiar screenshot to you. It was taken yesterday from the Virginia Department of Health website and shows the historical data for percent positivity. This is just for the eastern region since the onset of the pandemic. As indicated on the graph, the all-time high for percent positivity occurred on April 22nd, 16.3%, before then dropping to an all-time low of 3.5% on the 10th of June, to then only climb again in mid-July and remain up in the red zone up through and including August 2nd, when it stood at 10.2%. And then since August 2nd, throughout the month of August and into late September, percent positivity steadily declined and remained in the yellow zone until dropping back down into the green zone again on September 27th at 4.5%. Since that time, over these past six weeks, the percent positivity in the eastern region has been just above or just below 5%. And as last reported by the VDH, it currently stands at 5.2% for the eastern region. This is a summary of the seven-day rolling average for new cases of COVID-19. Again, this chart is just for the new, for the eastern region since the onset of the pandemic. The last time we were in the green zone in the eastern region was at the onset of the pandemic, on March 30, when we were at 23.6 new cases. We reached an all-time high for new cases in midsummer on the 25th of July at 483.3 cases per day on a seven-day rolling average. And then the number of cases began to steadily decline, falling into the yellow zone on the 19th of August at 264.3 cases, where it has remained in the yellow zone since then, currently standing at 212.4 cases per day on a seven-day rolling average for the eastern region. Now, this is, this is a chart you've not seen before. We created this for you to help you focus on what is happening in the eastern region just over the last six weeks. Why the last six weeks? Because it was on September 29th that we started the phase-in of students. So at the start of this chart is when we introduced students to in-person learning, beginning at elementary school. Over the period of six weeks, beginning on the 29th, as indicated by this graph, the seven-day rolling average for percent positivity for the eastern region has ranged from as low as 4.1% to as high as 4.2% with a mean of 4.6%. So if we just click back for just a minute. So if you just notice where we are today with percent positivity to the far right-hand side of the chart is exactly where we were three weeks ago and where we were six weeks ago. Okay? All right. This chart is for new cases in the eastern region, again, on a seven-day rolling average. Again, it starts on the 29th of September, as you work your way from left to right. As indicated on the graph, the number of new cases per day has ranged as low as 127 in early October to its high of 217, which was, occurred this past Sunday. The mean over these last six weeks has been 166 cases per day. Now, you'll notice this yellow line that we've just added to the chart, to the far right-hand side. That's to indicate that the number of new cases in the eastern region has been slowly increasing over the past two weeks, from 149 on the 24th of October to its current rate of 212 as of today. We certainly understand that many in the community are concerned about the increase of community transmission, not just locally in Virginia Beach and eastern region, but also across the state and across the nation. Just for context, this is a screenshot taken yesterday from the VDH website that shows the total number of new cases on a seven-day rolling average for the entire state. So this includes the eastern region and everyone else in the state of Virginia. As indicated on the slide, there was a very sharp increase in cases at the start set of the pandemic in mid-March up through the end of May, when we reached in Virginia 1,195 cases per day. And we are now currently experiencing a new high of 1,437 cases per day across the state. You'll notice on this chart how there have been three distinct periods of time when the rates have sharply increased. The first instance, as I mentioned earlier, occurred at the onset, mid-March to late May, before the rate declined throughout the month of June, only to increase again at the same sharp rate just around the Fourth of July holiday, beginning in early July up through, until again, starting to decline again throughout the month of August and September, only to rise again, as it currently is, beginning around the September 30 through today. Now, just by way of comparison, in the lower right-hand corner of this chart, I want you to notice the slope of that arrow. That is a replication of what I just showed you a minute ago of the rate of increase in cases per day in the eastern region. So just compare our slope in the lower right-hand corner to the slope across the state. That's the purpose of those, of those red arrows. I only bring this to your attention because while we acknowledge there is an increase in COVID-19 across the state and the nation, it's significantly less in the eastern region when compared to other areas in the state. So with that review of our health metrics, I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Robertson, who will be sharing more information about our ongoing plans for the return of in-person instruction for those remaining option-one secondary students in grades 7, 8, 10, 11, and 12. Dr. Robertson?
Thank you, Dr. Bergen, and good afternoon. In the next few slides, I will provide an update to the board on each topic noted here. Note, the topics were selected based on board questions and concerns shared in our last meeting on October 27th. On Thursday, October 29th and November 5th, families received information on our proposed return to school for all option-one secondary students. Staff were informed on Wednesday, October 28th, and continue to be updated on school plans. Parents of ninth-grade students were notified by their school that they will not be attending school four days per week beginning on November 12th, and will instead be attending either on Tuesday, Wednesday, if their last name begins with an A through K, or Thursday and Friday, if their last name begins with an L through Z. The Office of Transportation Services has completed plans to safely transport additional students to schools beginning November 12th. And in some cases, this required bus rerouting and bus assignment changes. Parents have been informed of this possibility and were asked to confirm their need for transportation in parent view. After this meeting tonight, a final communication will go out to families to ensure they know which bus to ride and what time they need to report to their bus stop location on Thursday morning. Principals, in partnership with the Department of Teaching and Learning, continue to provide both division and school-based professional learning on Mondays to assist teachers in their preparations. Later in the presentation, you'll hear more about these plans from Dr. Kip Rogers, our chief academic officer. Staff who have been teaching virtually all year have returned to the classroom to make final preparations to welcome students on Thursday under the hybrid schedule. Schools have completed their planning to safely provide breakfast and lunch to their in-person students each day. In addition, they have modified duty schedules to monitor student arrival, transition between classes, and dismissal each day. In short, schools are prepared to welcome additional students to in-person learning on Thursday, November 12th. At this time, although we do have instructional. At this time, although we do have instructional vacancies at each level, we are able to have a teacher or highly qualified substitute in place in each classroom. Schools continue to work closely with the Department of School Leadership and Human Resources to interview, recommend, and hire new teaching staff. In addition, schools continue to work with school leadership, human resources, and school division services to address classified vacancies. Administration is not immune to vacancies. We are blessed in Virginia Beach to have a deep and talented bench of future assistant principals and principals who are ready to step in and lead when selected. At this moment, we do have a handful of current and pending administrative vacancies we are planning to address. Finally, as of this moment, schools have been able to secure enough substitutes to cover teacher absences. Our substitutes are valued and respected, and schools work to make each one feel welcomed and safe in our schools. In our last board meeting, we were asked whether we could accommodate all option-one students four days per week. We posed this question to our principals, and here are the findings from middle school. Thirteen of 14 middle schools indicated constraints listed below for accommodating the return of all option-one students for four days per week. And they included five schools have classroom shortages ranging from four to 18 rooms. Eleven schools noted the need for additional FTEs, classified specifically, and the need to fill all remaining vacancies to support health and safety mitigations, and an ability to accommodate breakfast and lunch program and practice physical distancing at the same time. Similarly, our high school principals had, had, had some of the same thoughts. All 11 high schools, um, indicated constraints for accommodating the return of all option-one students for four days per week. Nine schools have classroom shortages ranging from an additional 15 to 62 classrooms needed. All 11 schools noted the need for additional FTEs. In this case, they noted not only classified, but also teachers, and the need to fill all remaining vacancies to support health and safety mitigations. They also noted the challenge of accommodating breakfast and lunch programs. Moving forward, we will continue to closely monitor the needs of schools to provide real-time and targeted support. We monitor and assess needs during my team's weekly principal meetings, as well as in school and classroom visits by the Department of School Leadership and Teaching and Learning. We monitor our health metrics and manage contact tracing daily and report these findings to senior leadership. In short, no day or weekend goes by where Dr. Spence's team is not in touch with all that is happening in schools, and we are prepared to act accordingly to any new data or outcomes. And for your information, on December 1st, as a preview, we will update the board on our return to participation plans for both middle school and high school athletics and activities. In addition, we will share our plans around Term II, or second semester, with the board. At this time, I want to turn the presentation over to Dr. Rogers.
Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Good evening, everyone. This afternoon, we will provide you with an update on our work with concurrent instruction and professional learning to support teaching and learning in our current environment. And this evening, I have with me Dr. Sharon Schubridge, who is our Director of Instruction Technology. I also have Ms. Melissa George, who is the principal at Kemsville High School, and Ms. Jen Blaze, who is our Instructional Technology Specialist at both Greerun High School and Salem High School. So, it's hard to believe that this coming Friday, the 13th, will mark eight months that we've been operating outside of our norms of what we've been accustomed to. Within those eight months, we've had several new beginnings: continuity of learning, emergency learning, summer learning, extended school year, 100% virtual, and transitioning some of our students back into a face-to-face setting. And now, we have implementation of concurrent instruction. It's important to note that through all of these transitions and responding to our current reality, we never lost sight of what guides our everyday business of teaching and learning, and that's going deeper with student learning. Our teaching and learning framework has guided our teachers' instructional practice with students at its core, and the plan and teach components of our framework that's located on the left-hand side, upper-left-hand side of the slide emphasizes the necessity that we have to plan what students are to learn, how they learn it, and what resources they, they need. Our teaching and learning framework is directly aligned to our strategic plan, Conference of 2025, transformational learning practices, our social-emotional learning framework, which we've often talked about, and our student goals that are outlined in our VBCPS graduate profile. So, as we approached this new idea of concurrent instruction, we looked to these documents to guide and assist us in aligning our work. What's, what's concurrent instruction? Concurrent instruction is simply when teachers teach some students in person and other students virtually simultaneously. And the goal of that approach is to simply make the virtual experience feel as similar as possible to the in-person experience by integrating across both of those modalities. And in a moment, we'll provide you with some detail on what that looks and feels like. So, what are the benefits of concurrent instruction? The benefit to concurrent instruction is that it will help us to connect our virtual students with our students and staff who are in school face-to-face. It also gives our students in both settings the opportunity to be taught by the same teacher, learning in real time with their peers, in order to foster a sense of community and a deeper connection within the school. It also gives our teachers the opportunity to focus on lesson delivery for both groups at the same time. There is no current research on concurrent instruction, as this is a relatively new model in response to the pandemic, as we all know. So, just today, myself and several of our teammates participated in a webinar that was led by Dr. Doug Fisher and Nancy Frey. It was great, that focused on distance learning. So, we all are pitching in together to make sure that we continuously update our resources and best practices for our teachers in our VBCPS instructional technology website, and Dr. Schubridge will share more about that momentarily. Now, of course, every plan, there's opportunities for challenges and opportunities for improvement to overcome, and teaching concurrently is absolutely no different. So, I want to take a look at some of the challenges that we've identified. We recognize that teaching virtually, face-to-face, and simultaneously with virtual students is a challenge. We also recognize that if we use our teaching and learning framework, focus on deeper learning, and instructional strategies that reflect solid instructional design, that we can allow both sets of students, both face-to-face and virtually, to have a rich and robust learning experience, and that's what we're doing. So, from meetings with our staff and conversations, we've identified two key perceived challenges within that model. The first of which is pretty obvious, that's classroom management. The concern here is that there will be difficulty in managing both face-to-face students and virtual students simultaneously. The good news is that we have some teachers already doing it, and they've shared strategies that have been effective. So, for example, those teachers have found the use of securely classroom as a way to identify when students are visiting websites that they shouldn't be visiting at the time for instruction, so that's proven to be very helpful. The second recurring thing is that teachers are very concerned about the challenge of attempting to cater to two audiences simultaneously. And they worry, they're rock star teachers, but they worry that they're not going to be able to support virtual, virtual students as well as they can support those that are face-to-face. Now, I want to be clear that most of those challenges come as a result of this methodology being new. And as has been shared previously, we absolutely support those teachers who are working in this fashion, in the op, in the mode of flexibility and grace. We talk about that all the time. And we're working together to focus on progress and not perfection. So, I've asked Dr. Schubridge to begin sharing details on our work with ensuring that our teachers are successful with implementing concurrent instruction. Dr. Schubridge?
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Um, I got the control, sorry. So, I just wanted an opportunity today to share with you some of the resources that the Instructional Technology coordinators have put together for the Instructional Technology Specialist and the schools. Starting in March, the Instructional Technology coordinators began to organize and curate resources for teachers. This is an internal website, so all staff members have access to this. And we've posted information, including video links for teachers, access that they can one time if they need it, or over and over again. So, these are there for them, and we continue to develop and add resources to this website. Regina is a rock star, and Regina's going to help me right now navigate through the website. We want you to see some of the wealth of information we've already curated for our teachers. Can you hit the home button for me? Thank you. Regina's fantastic, by the way. So, in September, we shared, I shared with you at the school board presentation several new applications. And the way we have set up our Instructional Technology website is that if Regina hovers over resources, we have a separate page for all of the new applications that we provided this year. So, there's a separate page for class links, securely classrooms, seesaw, et cetera. And on those pages, we have training videos, we have tutorials, we also have articles. So, we tried to combine for teachers in one location, resources and ways that they could use the new applications that we've provided. The Virtual Learning 101 dropdown contains several areas of best practices. This is where our strategic move professional development, um, plan that we created for teachers to start the year off lives. We also have a section for live synchronous instruction, and I'm going to ask Regina to click there. Those are where we have, on this site, we have our Google Meet, our Zoom, and our Schoology Conference. Just, this is, um, for teachers that are presenting, this is just where, if you need a one-stop shop, how do I use Google Meet? How do I use Zoom? Any of those, we provided all of those resources for teachers. So, if they had any questions after their initial training with their Instructional Technology Specialist, they had a place to go to find that information. Can you go to the concurrent learning for me? Awesome. So, when we had students coming back, um, my team met with the Department of Technology. We had Ronnie Meyer's job with us. We had some of the other coordinators and directors to talk about what did it need to look like for teachers. And I want you to think Apollo 13. Um, we tried to keep it as basic as possible to say, if this is what a teacher has in her classroom or his classroom, how does that work for them to be able to deliver instruction concurrently? And we used every type of board, whether they have a new ViewSonic, an old Promethean or Smart Board, and we tried every laptop possible. So, from a Chromebook to one of the old 440s to a 640, we tried every device to say, if this is all they had, could we make it work? We created a training for teachers. We had all of the elementary teachers come face-to-face at Plaza, and we trained them face-to-face and showed them how they just had to extend their screen. And while it sounds very simple, the ITS was like, oh, that makes so much sense to me. And then we provided that information out, shared it with ITSs and building administrators, and offered to attend, um, at their schools, if they wanted training at their schools. Most of the ITSs and building administrators already had a plan and just took the information we provided and shared, um, to put that out there for their staff. We've since updated our strategic moves presentation that we shared with everybody in August and added a whole section on concurrent teaching. So, we've continued to update these resources, as Dr. Rogers shared. There's no research on this. We are the research. Um, we are the demonstration in progress. So, every time we find something or read something that really aligns to what we're trying to do in Virginia Beach, we are creating something or sharing something on this website for teachers. Regina, we can go back to the... Regina's awesome, so can give, you know, Regina was a little nervous about doing that. But, um, so, the other, I had the opportunity last week to work with VBTV and several of our media and communications folks. We went out and did some learning walks in a couple of schools, and we put together a presentation because we felt it was important for our community, for all of you, to see what it is looking like in our schools. And we visited in elementary, middle, and high schools. So, we're going to share that with you now. COVID-19 may have changed how we go about our daily lives, but it has not changed the need to keep students engaged in their learning. At Virginia Beach City Public Schools, we have been training our educators for concurrent instruction, where they teach two groups of students at the same time. Some are face-to-face, while others are virtual. Training has been underway since August and continues every Monday. Concurrent instruction requires an effective blend of skills, equipment, and technology. The students here at Landstown High School are taking a class. While their teacher is still virtual, all of these students are taking different classes. Their second block, they will go to their face-to-face teachers.
Our ITSs provided us with a variety of choice boards on Mondays on our asynchronous day, so we were given opportunities to look at podcasts, to look at, um, just different self-paced activities that we could do to help us prepare for this concurrent learning.
We started the school year with just Chromebooks, and she made sure that all of the teachers got a laptop and a Chromebook. Having the dual devices has been crucial to teaching, um, both face-to-face and virtual students.
When I first heard that we were having eight teachers who were going to teach concurrently, I was definitely filled with a little bit of fear. Luckily, it was a very simple thing that the teachers were going to extend their desktop and show the students in the classroom exactly what the students at home were going to see on a Google Meet or a Zoom or whatever platform the teacher was using.
At first, I thought it was going to be just a lot of independent work, and it's turned out to be a lot, um, different than I expected. It keeps us all engaged into the topic, and she's making, yeah, she, making sure she checks on all of us and making sure we're all involved.
Through advisory, we were given lots of opportunities to explore SEL strategies. Um, we're given a slideshow that we can use to help get those kids connected with that and meet those social-emotional, um, challenges, especially for our kids that are home at the same time our kids are here.
From the very start, the Department of Technology and the Department of Teaching and Learning offered a training. After that training, came back, my ITS met with grade levels to help get them started. The grade levels themselves took great ownership and pride in making all of the pieces work to get off to a good start when we went to face-to-face and virtual. And then it's just been a constant conversation between administration, the ITS, and the teachers to get them the support and help that they've needed.
At first, I was overwhelmed by the sheer amount of technology being put in our direction, but I thought, let's just take it little baby steps. And as I've gathered it, it's become so successful, and it's become second nature.
I play instrument, and it's, I was in a tough time doing it without actually seeing a teacher and, like, instrument or anything like that. But now, I'm, she taught me how to actually hold it and play it, and I'm having a good time playing it now.
COVID-19 has changed the educational landscape forever. Here at Virginia Beach City Public Schools, we are preparing our students and teachers for the future, however it may look. We are continuing to provide robust learning experiences for our students to meet them, whether they are virtual or in a brick-and-mortar classroom. Face masks, social distancing, and plexiglass barriers are obstacles for the virus, but not instruction. So, I had already mentioned that we really looked at what classroom teachers already had and what they should have, and we are still working with the Department of Technology on resources to support them. Um, and we're looking at things that would be manageable and that would still be useful years from now. So, we're not looking to overload them with a lot of extra materials or extra resources. We're trying to provide the most beneficial pieces. Um, and at this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Melissa George, and Jen Blaze will follow, just to speak about the professional development that they've been doing, um, in their buildings to support this process.
Thank you, Dr. Schubridge. And welcome, Dr. George.
Thank you. Not doctor yet. Hopefully, I'll get there soon, though. But, thank you. I'll take it.
I'd rather air that way than the other way.
So, thank you for giving the opportunity to share a little bit about Kemsville High School and what we are doing around professional learning. Um, so, you can see on the screen, we have our vision statement, "Every Kemsville High School student is an inspired, active learner who creates positive change," and that is sort of our guiding focus. And so, through that, we've created four instructional agreements, and from those four instructional agreements, we have aligned those with the four, with the four, um, or with, where am I? With the... With the levels of engagement from teaching and learning. So each one of those align with the learner-to-learner, learner-to-student, and learner-to-teacher. The key at the start of the school year was to show teachers that while the learning environment has changed, the instructional focus remains the same. From there, based on input from teachers, professional learning was developed to support the teachers as they navigated the virtual world and the concurrent learning environments when students returned to the building. Teachers were able to provide input on the professional learning they wanted through school-based surveys and indicated they preferred to have more on-demand professional learning. So we found balance in the live and on-demand learning. Since the beginning of the school year, at Kim'sville, we have provided 21 professional learning opportunities for our teachers. Two of those are still ongoing, and we have two more planned for the very near future. Some of the sessions were provided from teaching and learning in the Department of Technology and were delivered by our instructional technology specialist. And others were teacher-driven, based on feedback from the surveys. We focused on finding our teachers' experts, our teacher experts, as much as possible to lead the professional learning, so teachers have someone in the building to connect with as they implement the strategy or the technology. But the most beneficial learning that has taken place in the work that we have done in our schools is through what we call our special ops. For others, they are known as the instructional specialist in the building. Our special ops have formed their own professional learning community and work in concert to provide instructional coaching through mini and full coaching cycles aligned to the instructional agreements and the levels of engagement. Additionally, each special ops member took an area of specialty, and we advertise those areas of specialty of focus for teachers so that they knew who to reach out to for assistance. For some teachers, special op buddies were created to help them better navigate School G, Zoom, Pairdeck, Loom, Securely, Synergy, and Google Suites, just to name a few. The special ops teams took time to plan with teachers, go into their classrooms, help them to navigate the different pieces of technology, and even co-teach with them when needed. For some teachers, they were comfortable after just a few meetings, and for others, the relationship is still ongoing. With special ops touching base with the teachers, our teachers checking in for some much-needed reassurance. Additionally, the special ops will join with PLCs to help them as they plan and navigate new instructional environments. But we also are leveraging the opportunities to support teachers through observations. One way is to ensure that all of our administrators are providing coaching opportunities. So while we appreciate that there have been changes to the evaluation process to eliminate tasks for both teachers and administrators, we are still using those observations as a way to coach our teachers in areas of growth that they have identified and that align with the instructional agreements. Some teachers just want us to give us, want feedback on how they're navigating both the environment of concurrently teaching, others want feedback on how they're engaging students. So our focus is to coach our teachers and have dialogue around instruction that benefits them specifically. And professional Mondays are becoming jam-packed days for our staff. On Mondays, teachers are participating in PLC meetings, department meetings, and office hours for students. They're also using that time to work with their ITSs and other instructional specialists for professional learning opportunities around live or on-demand learning. Additionally, we provide resources through our weekly newsletter and our pay attention memo, and we link to a variety of articles to provide for teachers so they have easy access. Because there's so much information that is out there, we want to curate that all in one place so our teachers have easy access. So the bottom line, the learning environment that our teachers are navigating is unlike any that we have experienced. In previous years, we all have understood and, for the most part, have experienced the learning environment that teachers and students were in. For the first time, the 2020-21 school year is completely different from any learning environment any one of us have taught in. Unless we are currently in the classroom, we do not fully understand the challenges teachers are experiencing by teaching and learning concurrently in both the virtual and in-person setting. As administrators, specialists, and beyond, we can assume what teachers need, and we try to provide that professional learning to give teachers the tools and resources they need. But to be honest, we are learning right along with the teachers. At Kim'sville High School, we work to leverage what we can, but our best resource is our teachers. We listen to them. We develop PL based on what they want and not just add PL because we think that's what they need. I'm extremely proud of what these teachers have accomplished, the successes that they are having, and continue to work alongside them to ensure they have the professional learning that they need. So thank you very much for the time you've given me and for the glimpse into professional learning at Kim'sville.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello.
Thank you for having me. My name is Jennifer Blaze. I'm an instructional technology specialist at Salem High School, Green Run High School, and Green Run Collegiate. I'm a split ITS, obviously, meaning there is a full-time in both of the other buildings, and I balance my schedule between both buildings. I have approximately 250 teachers that I stay available for seven days a week. This is a personal choice, but I feel my teachers should never have to question whether they need to email me because they're not sure of which school building I belong to that day. My colleagues, my two other ITSs at the buildings, and I, in addition to some of our other specialists in the building, have created over 50 PD opportunities in hybrid and virtual instruction since March. In the beginning, we started off focusing on making sure our teachers knew how to use a conferencing app and a recording app so that they were able to deliver their instruction. So by March 14th and 15th, those are the lessons that we had created inside of School G for our teachers to prepare for the 16th. We worked tirelessly through the spring, making sure our teachers were as comfortable as possible using those tools. In addition, we have created numerous quick tip videos that we put inside of our School G classes. And weekly now presently, we are having Monday PD that is available for our teachers inside of School G. These virtual coaching sessions include lessons on division purchase resources such as class link, securely classroom, and of course, basic and advanced features with inside School G. Most importantly, we are working with our teachers on coaching tools and have created sessions to cover the pedagogy and the best practices as we are discovering what is working best inside of our classrooms. Some of these include promoting positive behavior during concurrent classes, concurrent instruction using small group, and choice boards. I will say, during those first four weeks from mid-August to September, I alone had more than 7,000 emails, which I answered from my teachers at my three schools. This is not unique to me, however. High school ITSs experience similar email volume from their teachers. As teachers, we're taught that learning occurs during the zone of proximal development. My students, who are my teachers, are well into that frustration zone, however. As a coach, my job is to work very hard for them and to make sure that I'm giving them strategies and best practices that are worth their time and their effort to learn in order to implement for best practices for our students to increase engagement, to make sure that everyone is participating in our classes. The greatest need I've had as a coach, however, is helping teachers to convert their live lessons into hybrid virtual lessons. This is a long and tedious process for all of our teachers, including our veteran teachers. For example, just last week, I was coaching a veteran teacher who previously was hesitant towards technology. It just wasn't innate for her. Normally, the class, the lesson that she would have been teaching this week, she would use her simulation babies in the parenting and childcare course. However, that not being an option this year for virtual students, we got together and created a lesson, and we were able to change her previous lesson in two major ways. We took her old presentation that was not Chromebook-friendly and converted it to Google Slides. We also incorporated an add-on called Pairdeck, which allowed her to increase student engagement and added in some learning checks as she was doing her presentation. We also added some Flipgrid assessment pieces into the lesson that she normally would have done through classroom demonstration with the simulation babies. So the students were able to create videos on variety of parenting tasks, such as feeding the baby, how to soothe a crying baby. And the students would make the videos and demonstrate their learning through Flipgrid. I received an email from her last night expressing how worried she was about this unit because a lot of the kids take that course because they love carrying the simulation babies around the school, but not having those, she was worried that the students were going to be disappointed. In the email, she expressed how excited she was to share with me that the kids loved being able to create egg babies and create videos and show what they've learned through the Flipgrid. She was very excited and motivated to create more lessons such as these. I love my job. I love my job. I sometimes have had to remind myself of that through the last few months, but I truly do love my job. I strive to help my teachers daily and build them up into the strong instructional leaders that they are. But it has been an arduous task during the pandemic, particularly as a split ITS as myself, who sees myself as having two full-time schools, really three full-time schools, including collegiate. But it's all worth it in the end because I've been in lots of classes and watched the kids learn, and their engagement is going up, and the teachers have done a fabulous job making this transition. Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. Okay, I need a pulse check here with my colleagues. It's 5:30, and I'm just, it's my understanding Ms. Shaw's is only available now, so we need to ask her to come to the podium. Do I have, I mean, I'm asking for approval, but really, there's no alternative if we need to give her time to offer her presentation, so, thank you.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Spence. This will only be a few minutes. We are traveling down a path in education and healthcare never seen in our lifetime. The weight of decision-making is heavy on you, Dr. Spence, and our leadership team. In response to a health crisis, it is important to collect reliable information, consult with experts, evaluate your available resources, and move in the direction that will bring the most benefit and cause the least harm. In Virginia Beach City Public Schools, during this COVID-19 global pandemic, over many months, we have included all these steps in our school plan, decision-making process for employees and students. You have heard in previous workshops from our area health experts the benefits of in-person This evening, I will provide a brief update of our continued consultation with area health experts, the monitoring of health metrics and data trends, and our prevention mitigations. I will begin with consultation with local health experts. Members of our area Physicians Ad Hoc Committee and the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health Medical Director reviewed current health metric data and our current plan to bring back our remaining secondary students to in-person instruction. They communicated that they did not view our current health metrics data at a level that warranted a pause in our current school plan. In addition, they recommended clear communication from the school division to the school community that our health metrics are trending upwards. The experts stressed the importance of practicing prevention mitigations, not only in the schools, but at home and in the community, such as physical distancing, avoiding large group gatherings, and wearing of a face covering to decrease our community spread levels. Regarding the monitoring of health metrics and data trends, through consultation with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health and daily review of our Virginia Department of Health COVID-19 online data dashboard, the eastern region of Virginia Beach health metrics in our school plan in response, Dr. Bergen has shared this data and current trends. There's a slide I'd like you to just pop up. Can you just click to the slide? The slide that you're looking at is giving you, is showing you a couple point, data points. It is showing you the cases in Virginia Beach schools or school buildings that we contact traced. These are individuals that were identified with COVID-19 that were in our school buildings during the transmission risk dates. As you follow through, there's a weekly report that's given, there's daily information, but there's a weekly report that's given to Dr. Spence and senior leadership. And you can see that we started on the first day that school began. There's key points on here as we look at Week 4. Week 4 was when special education and English as second language learners began. We look at Week 5, our pre-K through second grade, and then Week 6, grade 3 through 5, and on the 6th of October, our 6th and 9th graders began. So if you're looking at the three points, you're looking at the cumulative cases. So since we began the beginning of the school year, if you continue to add our cases together, we did go up. As you're looking at the blue line, you're looking at cases that required contact tracing. These are actual cases that occurred in our, in our school buildings, not just in schools, but in any of our school buildings. And you can see that there has been a little bit of an upward trend, which reflects the community. The lower line shows connected cases. And at this time, we've only had one connected case during the school year, and that was two individuals with COVID-19 that were in one school building. The last, the last area that I was going to talk about is the prevention mitigations. Our COVID-19 prevention mitigations have been well communicated to the school community and implemented in our schools. An important mitigation is contact tracing. That is completed for all employees and students with COVID-19 that were in school building or on a bus during their transmission risk dates. Public health defines transmission risk dates as beginning either 48 hours prior to onset of symptoms, or if without illness symptoms, 48 hours prior to the testing date until the person isolates. Contact tracing will identify close contacts in the school or on a bus that require 14 days of quarantine from the last date of exposure. These investigations are completed by our health services team in collaboration with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, the school principal or supervisor, and interviews with the ill employee or parent of student who has COVID-19. Other school staff, when it's applicable, will be added to the contact tracing investigation to gather information. To summarize, what do we know today? We know that our health metrics have not reached a level that warrants a change in our school plan to keep our current students and add our remaining secondary students to in-person instruction. We know that our community health metrics are showing a sloping trend upward in the number of cases, but not a rapid spike like seen in the middle of the summer. We know that the COVID-19 cases for employees and individuals in our schools have occurred, but have been few, and have resulted in only one connected case of two individuals in one school. We know that the recent Halloween and upcoming holiday gatherings of family and friends, expected travel, and the moving of people indoors in the colder weather will impact our community health metrics and increase our case numbers in schools, regardless of our in-school prevention mitigations. Together, we continue to walk this path of providing the best possible education for students during this school year, with a top priority of health and safety for our employees and students. I just want to thank you all for all your hard work. I know it's, it's very difficult what you're doing, and I'll thank Dr. Spence and all the support that we're getting during this challenging time. Thank you for your time.
So Ms. Shaw, thank you, and your nursing staff. And I want to let my colleagues know, and Ms. Shaw, you can confirm this, that you'll be available by Zoom during the formal meeting with the questions, and I'm sure we have.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Wonderful. So, and to, to point out to the public that we will continue this discussion at the formal meeting, information item D, update on reopening next phase, and this workshop is adjourned.
Madam Chair, if you would allow me two minutes?
Please.
To wrap up, I would appreciate it, because I think it'll be helpful as we head into the agenda comments as well, for you all to have this perspective before we get to questions during the information session, and I'll be very brief. So, so- So, so what you've heard tonight, um, relative to the work is there's good work going on to support where we are today. We are, uh, you've also heard we are seeing a rise in cases. Uh, we do see metrics that are relatively flat concerning test positivity. Um, so we are seeing, as you saw, they're relatively stable but continuing, uh, cases. So cumulatively a rise in that number. But, um, as you've heard our health folks say, and as we've heard in consultation with them, uh, we don't appear to be the source or spreading, uh, of the virus and our mitigations appear to be working. Uh, our health officials, as you just heard Mrs. Shaw indicate, um, have indicated that our, our, um, mitigations appear to be working. And if we continue to use these, we should see similar results. However, we are a reflection of our community, so we just have to be aware of that. Uh, my recommendation therefore is that we do proceed as planned. I think that's been indicated a few times tonight, but I want to just affirm that. My recommendation is that we continue as planned, as was presented at the last board meeting, uh, and bring students back on Thursday. Um, we're happy to talk about that in more detail in terms of the reasons for our various communications. But one of the significant reasons for us to continue to communicate with our families about this is what you've heard here. And that is that we are a reflection of our community. And, and as you heard Mary say, we are concerned as we head into the holidays about what that might mean. There are appropriate steps that our community can take to help mitigate the spread of this disease in our community. Uh, and we're going to be communicating that and talking about that. Um, and folks would need to understand that as we've suggested in our plan, um, significant spikes ahead towards, uh, red and out of yellow is going to force us to take a different direction with this. And so we'll, we'll have more, um, uh, conversation about that when we return as an information item. But I wanted to, uh, just affirm that recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Spence. So this, this workshop is adjourned. We'll convene for six o'clock formal meeting.